Item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by the state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. We also have Director Anthony is out of town, but he's calling in this evening. Before we begin tonight's agenda, there are a couple of things I'd like to share with you. First of all, as part of our commitment to strengthen support for families and students, we're instituting a few new practices at this board meeting, and I'd like to ask Director Sparza Brown to share those changes.
Great, thank you. So, starting tonight, the PPS Ombudsman woman, Judy Martin, will attend all board meetings. The role of the Ombuds person is to serve as an informal, independent, and neutral confidential resource to assist parents and our community members in school-related concerns and issues. So, our goal is to strengthen how you families access the correct channels for answering questions, addressing concerns, or resolving school and education-related issues. So specifically, Judy will be here to listen to the public comments, and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it, including: listen and identify the areas of concern in the appropriate first place to seek resolution; serve as a resource to help connect the right people to resolve the relevant concerns; provide information about district policies and procedures; conduct informal interventions and mediations. When possible, we encourage the first place to discuss a concern to be at the local source with a teacher, staff, principal, because many issues can be resolved at that first stage. We also want families to know the Ombuds person is a resource and can be contacted at any time to help determine the next steps to address and resolve concerns. So, for the record, Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045, or ombudsman@pps.net. So, this is the first step in an overall priority to better support families and students in meeting their educational needs, and as we expect to be discussing, the complaint process and opportunities to provide better family support and services in the coming weeks. Thank you. Secondly, beginning this evening, we are pleased to report that the board will have Chinese, Russian, Somali, Spanish, and Vietnamese interpreters at each meeting. So, I'd like to ask the interpreters to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language that they will be interpreting, and inform the audience where they will be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance. And we're hoping that this gets shared broadly with our communities so that they know they don't need to phone ahead in order to access content of the meeting. So, please come forward. There should be five, right? Yeah, right down here, thank you. And I guess perhaps speak into that microphone, introduce yourself. I know. Come on down. Are we missing someone? Chinese, Russian, Somali, Spanish, Vietnamese?
I am Chinese.
Somali? Perhaps we're missing. Okay, well, let's please introduce yourselves for those of you that are here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Olga. Hi, my name is Olga Belogurova. I'm Russian interpreter. Здравствуйте. Меня зовут Ольга Белогурова. Я русский переводчик. We will be located all the way at the back of the room. Мы будем расположены сзади в комнате. Пожалуйста, обращайтесь.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Chow Vod. I'm Vietnamese interpreter, and I sit in the back. Тулая Chow Vod. Тулая фендервина гурит вик. Несконтика тэгапыгы жыгы. Come on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Costa. I'm an interpreter for Spanish-speaking families, and I also will be with the rest of the interpreters in the back of the room. Buenas noches. Me llamo Rosa Costa. Hago de intérprete para las familias que hablan español. Y yo también estaré con los otros interpretes en la parte de atrás de este cuarto.
Gracias.
My name's Yida. I am Chinese interpreter, speaking Cantonese and Mandarin. Я хэй чоу мэн фаньи. Я кёл Лянь Аи Хон. Гам оля дэуэй хэй хоуми гэ.
Thank you very much, and as you all heard, they will be in the back of the auditorium at all board meetings. So, thank you for joining us tonight. Great. And now, on to our agenda.
Thank you, Director Sparza Brown. I have a feeling we're going to be changing the Ombudsman to Ombuds Person. That was hard to say. So, beginning with tonight's meeting, we're going to be combining student testimony and public comment, but always having students going first. And before we begin the public comment period, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. The board appreciates the community for taking the time to attend the meeting and provide your feedback to the board. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, concerns, and reflections. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen with our electronic devices turned off. Board members will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board manager, Roseanne Powell, will follow up on issues raised during public testimony. Roseanne's absent this meeting this evening, but we'll get information to her. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration for others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. People speaking tonight in public comment have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time's up, a red light will go on. At that point, we ask that you respectfully wrap up and conclude your comments. But we appreciate everybody who's come this evening to share their thoughts and concerns. And with that, Ms. Hewson, do we have students or the public signed up for public comment?
No students for public comment. And our first two speakers are Brad Nelson and Amber Clark.
So, interim superintendent, Alwad, and members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Earlier today, I sent over my testimony, so you can read it in greater detail. I timed it, and it was about seven minutes, so I'm going to give you the condensed version here. I have two kids in Portland Public Schools, a sixth grader and a second grader, and tonight I'd like to advocate for four things. The first is to restore vice principal positions at the six elementary schools where it was removed in the latest budget. The second thing is to restore the ratio for kindergarten from 28 to 1 back down to 25 to 1. I'd also like to advocate for a couple of continuing things, some increased equity and promotion of diversity throughout the district. And finally, I'd like to call, I guess, for general cooperation, because I know there's a lot of parents that want to help, and there's a lot of teachers and administrators and people at the district office, and I think we can all do a lot of good things if we work together. Specifically with the vice principals, there's about $100 million more, four million of which or so should go to PPS. Bridle Mile is one of six schools that lost their vice principal position, and this is impacting 3,000 students, roughly 6% of the overall district. That's a lot of kids. That's a lot to ask of an administrator. We need to support our principals. We need to support our schools, and we need to support our staff, and having those vice principals there, dealing with interventions and other things, is huge. So, please find some of that money and restore that position. Likewise, I've been in a room with more than 25, five- and six-year-olds, and that's a lot of kids. 28 to 1 is a big, big ratio, and that gets even more difficult when you deal with schools that are historically underserved, that don't necessarily have the parent community that can come in and to volunteer and to help out. So, for both of those things, they would go a long way to providing much safer and stronger overall school experience. I know there's a lot of things that have been happening in the district. There's a lot of things, you know, big issues that you're going to talk about tonight, you're going to be tackling over the next couple of months. And I think one of the things I've found as I've worked not only with, you know, the school, but also with the district, there's a lot of good people that are working at the district. There's a lot of good people that are working, you know, at the various schools, great administrators, good people. Please find a way to retain those people. Please find a way to fill those positions. Please find a way to support us as community members, but also the overall district. It's easy for us to get frustrated and to bash things, and we need to stop doing that. So, I want to help. I know there's a lot of people out there that would also like to help. So, I do want to advocate for specific things, but just generally for the overall district. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Amber Clark, C-L-A-R-K, and I am on the executive PTA board for Cesar Chavez K-8. I also have a fourth grader and a first grader in the DLI program, Spanish immersion. So, I'm here basically to talk about equity and how the school district is failing to adequately support the Cesar Chavez School with staffing, curriculum, and resources that our students need to succeed. Chavez is a focused school and dual-language. It's a school with heart. It's a great school. I love it. We're currently renovating our house so we can stay as that is our neighborhood school. But it's a, and, you know, wonderful families, fabulous, hard-working staff, but we have some huge issues. We have less than educated and less than economically, you know, they're not a very wealthy parents and everything. And anyways, we have about 30% plus of English language learners, 80% plus historically underserved population, and we're ranked in the bottom 10 in the schools in all of Oregon for our test scores. Might be about 15%, but we are a focused school, which means we need extra help. We've been identified as a school in crisis by the interim superintendent McKean, according to the March Oregonian article. So, this is a, it's a good school, but it's a school that's really challenged. My daughter has been, we've been there four years, and this will be her third principal that is incoming within those four years. That's a problem. This year, we have 14 staff who are either being shuffled out by seniority, retirement, layoffs, by choice, but it's a huge staff turnover. And a lot of EAs are being cut, educational assistants are being cut due to budget cuts, and also seniority. Our, all our administration is new this next year. Our office staff is going to be new this next year. We need office staff who are bilingual. It's 60% Latino at our school. I am happy to be there as minority family, but we really need staff who are bilingual, and that's a big issue. There's been a lack of clarity and things as far as the principal search that's going on, and a high turnover, and it seems to be like a stepping stone for their careers rather than a place to stay and be principal. We have had principals who are assistant superintendent now, the head of ESL, middle school principal, and the direct now, newly, the director of high school programs. And these are people that have just been in and out, and it's great for their careers, but it's really bad for our students and our school. And as a parent, I really care about our school, and I want you to care for our school too, with the curriculum that we need, the staffing that we need, the support that we need, everything that our students deserve to succeed in areas where they are supposedly not supposed to succeed. So, we really need your help to make it truly a focused school and true equity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your comments, and we'll make sure that we pass along the comments. We'll obviously take them into consideration during our committees and our board work, but also the senior director who has the school in their portfolio. Thank you.
Next, we have Hugh Green and Teresa Rayford.
Looks like the two remaining people who'd signed up are not present, so we will move to the next part of our meeting. While it's in the heat of the summer, our schools are about ready to open another month, and I'd like to ask superintendent to provide a report on the preparations for the opening of all our schools, and then we'll have a separate section on the opening of our rebuilt and re-modernized schools.
Happy to do so. Good evening, board members, students, staff, and community members. I want to just read a small statement before I get into the report. I'm pleased to be your interim superintendent as we work to hire a permanent leader for the district. Before I get into detail of the report, I want to take a minute to say some thank-yous. First, thank you to our students for their hard work and learning what it will take to succeed in school, in college, and whatever path you decide to do and take. Thank you. Second, I want to thank our teachers and staff for the immense service that they perform to support our students. We are in a period of transition at PPS. The district is in need of new thinking, of stepping away from the status quo and the traditional ways we have done business. My leadership style is to put a premium on problem-solving, focus on service, and to never lose sight of the imperative that we focus on what matters most for our kids. Yes, we have a significant number of vacant positions, and we are on track to fill them all, but we have made sure that we have solid interim leaders in all the positions that we have vacant, and as we pursue hiring permanent positions for these high-level positions. Yeah, I do come from a financial background, but I entered the field of education because I care deeply about the mission of public schools and supporting student success. And to be clear, while this is a period of transition, the district is under control, and a lot of good work is happening. And I'm going to go through some of that work that's happening to prepare our schools. As you, many of you, especially staff, there's a lot of work that goes into getting ready for the first day of classes each year. This year, what we've done, we have asked every department to come up with a list of all the actions that they will take to prepare the schools. We have a report I will share with you, a memorandum, along with a link to these reports, and you'll see all the details for all the departments and all the preparation that's taking place. But in the next, I took sign a kind of sample of some of the work that's happening for certain department. I'd like to share that with you. For example, in IT, we deploy IT-oriented teams to each school to check classroom and lab technology. Example, tech bundles, phones, mobile cards, to ensure everything is working correctly as the schools start. Create accounts for newly hired staff or staff who are changing and moving from one position to another. The accounts are created automatically when staff are entered in PeopleSoft. We have to do re-imaging and repair of computing devices, specifically in labs and cards that are available for classrooms. Prepare mandatory compliance training that's done electronically online, and we have mandatory training that all staff have to take, so we have to prep for that. These should be ready by now. They were due by July 1st, and they are ready to go. In transportation, we have had significant amount of challenges that we dealt with last year. We are actively working on trying to make significant improvement in that area. With that, we're really going aggressively trying to hire and recruit new drivers to get to a full staffing level. This way, we don't deal with shortage next year. That's proved to be a really challenging area, and we're working really hard on it. Perform all needed safety inspections, preventative maintenance, and repairs to ensure our fleet is ready for startup. This includes athletic vans, school-assigned vehicles, buses, transportation sedans, update radio cameras and GPS equipment as needed. Three, present new information and training to school staff, secretaries, admin staff prior to school start, new field trip request upgrade that we just created, bus tag requirements, stop evacuation drills, et cetera. These are some of the stuff that we're working on in transportation. We're also working on communication of new routes to parents and schools. That's a critical piece. Quite often, we, last year at least, we have had some hiccups. We're working to improve that. Website publication assists with individual school mailings as necessary, and ensure bus tag information is updated and printed for school start. In the facility, the facilities and asset management in the custodial area will be stripping and waxing all classrooms, hallways, and floors in entire schools, removing furniture and do that work, deep cleaning all carpets and deep cleaning all restrooms. Electrical, where we will do relamp all gyms and auditoriums, generator load bank testing prior to school start. In the warehouse, we'll be doing a lot of delivery of a new and additional curriculum to schools, retrieve all science kits to warehouse for replenishment and re-deliver them to schools as needed. There's approximately about 3,000 kids that we will have to do some work on them. In the multi-craft area, backfilling engineered wood chips for playground area and structures, and in the grounds, mowing the grounds and making sure they're ready for schools. Mechanicals will be doing a lot of testing for the boilers and ensure these are ready for next semester, lockers repairs, and combination of other work. In terms of leadership, we have filled most of the positions for the principals except for Oakley Green. We're doing the interviews as we speak, and one of the planning principals, we're doing interviews on that one as well, and we're hoping in the next few weeks, we will have all positions filled. Thank you.
Just a question. Is it, so only Oakley Green and the planning principals are the only vacancies?
So far, yes. Now, we have had made offers, conditional offers to a lot of the positions, but we're doing the background check. That's why we may not have announced some of these positions yet.
Thanks.
Any questions by members of the board?
No, this just isn't the real exciting stuff, but it's so important to the experience of students and families come the start of school year. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joseph, are we, you were talking about the buses. We have for this school year the app that we've talked about that allows parents to track in real-time bus progress and delays and all that, or?
I know we're looking at it. I'm not sure we will have it handy or not yet. I mean, we have probably much more foundational stuff and infrastructure in making sure we have the right number of bus drivers hired and paid, and the routing. That's, these are more just basic stuff that really caused a lot of the headache for us last year, and we're trying to make sure we address them. I know, Jerry, if you can answer this question, I'd...
It's on track for fall. Our first exactly, let's get drivers so that the students have enough time.
That's good.
So, just a question, just following up on the transportation. So, is there like one number for parents to call that gets answered regardless of the hour?
So, we are working on put that in place. We don't have it handy yet, but we will have it. Jerry, you want to talk about it?
Please do, because that was an issue last year that was...
Good evening. Jerry Vincent, chief operating officer. We're actually excited about what's happening in transportation. We still need the result. We're short drivers from PPS and First Student, but we're making good progress. App is coming this fall. IT is working, our own IT department's working on it with us. We are setting up right now, per our consultant's advice, down there, six phone lines that are in a separate area of transportation for all calls that come in throughout the day, even a mid-shift line, and then we have an after hours. We're trying to get the messages out. So, it's a complete difference from where we were before, and even when we did have one line, two lines before, they were right with our routers. So, you have all this crosstalk going on and everything in the same room. We've taken over an extra conference room down there. We're dropping six lines in as we speak, and we're setting that up for that's how we deal with the questions versus this is how we deal with the drivers, all that was intermingled before. So, it's not sexy and exciting, but it looks like it's going to be terribly efficient, and that's what we're aiming for.
All right. That'll be much appreciated by parents.
So, clarification, when you talked about hiring drivers, was that both you and First Student, or were you speaking of?
Correct. We're working with the First Student, and we're coordinating these efforts, but we also hire our own drivers as well.
Right. All right. Both of us are short. We're more promising than we were even a month ago, and we can't give any more of an update because just like I heard earlier with the principals and the background checks, there's three others. There's the people who've walked in the door, people we've interviewed, people we've approved for student, and us. Now, they have to go through a background check. Then, they have to make sure that they have their updated license in order to drive the buses on the road, and we're looking at all of that plus first day of school, and we're bringing these things two together.
Good work. Great. One more, transportation. So, we've communicated with the families that will be moving like out to Marshall during the remodels and have taken care of those, that busing situation?
I believe so, yeah. I mean, we have worked closely with the principal, and we've been in constant communication in term of not just the move, but also providing the transportation.
Great. Good, thanks.
So, one of the logistical things we need to work out for transportation and everything in general is good news. You know, Google updated us when Franklin went to Marshall and when Fabian went to Tubman. We've checked in with them, whoever Google is, with our people, and they won't fix it until we have permanent occupancy, where we have temporary occupancy on our sites right now. At permanent occupancy, Marshall will now say Grant, and Fabian will be Fabian. So, those are the two big ones. So, we even had a tour last week and worn as many people as we could, but two people, you know, didn't get the memo, and they did Google, and there you go. So, we're working on that one. So, we're supposed to be able to turn that key right around second week of August, which is just before. We're nervous about that, you know, in terms of them changing and updating their websites. We can't control it if they don't. So, we're pushing as much as you can push Google.
Yeah. Thanks.
You might as well just stay there, because the next item is the three rebuilt and modernized schools. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'm going to start with Fabian and Concordia. This is a $33 million project. Fabian School will celebrate its grand opening on Tuesday, August 29 from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. The building will open for tours, and our building partners Kaiser Permanente, Concordia University, and Trillium Family Services and Basics will be onsite as well. We have been partners and neighbors with Concordia University for at least 65 years in our Fabian site. Fabian and Concordia University, well, the partnership extended, we were just Concordia, Fabian, and the University of Concordia. We extended that partnership to Kaiser Permanente as well. The team has transformed the site, once housed a single-story of 1950 wood frame structure with many maintenance problems into a new and exciting three-floor structurally sound steel and concrete learning environment. I want to give you some of the features that we have had in the school in term of the transformation. The old site had 58,000 square feet. The new size had, the new location have 133,000 square feet. The new site meet seismic and accessibility building codes. There's a new fire alarm system, and it's on track to be the first district lead gold building. We have put there about 151 kilowatt solar photovoltaic system that's now operating, ADA compliance with two elevators, energy-efficient LED lighting, fully air-conditioned, and a state-of-the-art playground and two covered play areas. In addition to that, it had a high-school-sized gymnasium and high-school-level science lab, and it has, and it's equipped with card reader access. After years of informal collaboration, PPS and Concordia University started work on more formal arrangement to help Concordia Education students gain hands-on experience in the classroom while assisting Fabian teachers by providing class support. As I mentioned earlier, the partnership has grown to include Kaiser Permanente, Basics, and Trillium Family Services in addition to Portland Public Schools. The goal of this collaboration is to help close the opportunity gap for the most vulnerable students and families and provide wraparound services that include early childhood education, health and wellness program, STEAM, one-on-one tutors, and food club. That can conclude the Fabian one. Before I move to the next one, I want to ask... Before I move to the next one, I want to ask if you have any questions, and Jerry and I can provide any answers about the school.
Yeah, it's exciting, so the 151 KW photovoltaic system's actually spending back against the meter while we're still occupying and wrapping up construction, so fully functional, it's exciting, and it's, again, it's our first lead gold building in the district. Yeah.
It's a beautiful building. It's incredible.
It's a beautiful color.
It's exciting for our kids, I mean, this is a great building, really is.
Yeah.
The next school we want to update you on is the Franklin High School. On Friday, September 1st, at 6:00 p.m., we will inaugurate Franklin new football field and track during the Quakers' first home game. Franklin is the final Portland Public High School to receive an all weather-turf field and a new track. The project marks the completion of the tin grate field project, which PPS has done in tandem with Nike, and financial support from the city of Portland, Multnomah County, Oregon Sports Authority, local soccer clubs and others, and this is a really great partnership with a lot of our partners, with Nike and others, that provided this experience for our kids, giving them a really nice field. Franklin High School, it's cost about $113 million. And some of the features in this school, I'm going to just go through some of the stuff, the old size was 237,000, the new size is about 280,000. It's ADA compliant, and it had about six elevator, there's a significant solar energy work that's being done there, and the former auditorium converted to media center, and new student commons with indoor and outdoor eating areas, and new science classroom, CTE and Makerspace, new performing arts building, new gym, biomedical and culinary arts center. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about Franklin.
Any questions from the board?
It's looking great.
Yeah, it's beautiful, I, I drove by it yesterday, it's really another gorgeous building. The last school we have is Roosevelt High School, it's $92 million project. We opened Phase 1 last year, we're about to open Phase 2, so the, the second opening will be on Friday, September 29, beginning at 4:00 p.m. Among some of the changes we, we've done since then is the old size is 202,000 square feet, the new size 247,000, it'll have, it have new gymnasium and weight room, three new CTE classroom, including industrial arts, construction and robotics, writing, digital media, publishing center, new commons and cafeteria, and new theater and, and drama classroom. That concludes our report about the new three schools, but we have a lot of work that's done, this is just glimpse of what's been done, I could probably spend hours talking about it. Any questions you have for me or Jerry?
Yeah, but we had an event in June in the Roosevelt New Performing Arts Center that was just, is beautiful, so exciting, the families were thrilled.
All of these projects are about 95% complete, and we've made up the time that we lost during the snow days, that was nine, 10 days to the district, but to the contractors who can't work on the site again, it was over three weeks, and, and also, I just can't say enough about the construction crews on both Roosevelt and Franklin, because they signed agreements two years ago when the school year started after Labor Day, and when it came back, they lost that time two years in a row, plus two years of snow days, ice days in a row. And they're, they're, they're just doing a great job, yeah.
That's great, we're grateful.
Yeah.
Great, well, we're all excited for that opening. Scott?
Anything on the, anything more to add on the transition of Grant to Marshall, other than, it's been painted blue or something like that, I don't know, that's what I-
So, that was actually, when I heard Fabian Franklin Roosevelt, I started putting Grant one together, but I thought maybe we were going to do that at another update, because we also have a video we want, we're comprising, want to show you, just like we did back in the Franklin days, we have Grant students saying, hi, this is my past, this is how I get on, this is how I get there, and we have some of the bus stops and established that we're going to do with the part that's being transported, but it's coming together, but it would need, you know, an August board meeting, and we'll, we'll give you the whole meal deal.
Great. Well, while we're on the topic of facilities, in May of this year, Portland voters by a wide margin approved a new bond to modernize and rebuild schools and address health, safety and accessibility issues. This evening, we'll receive the first of what will be quarterly reports on the environmental, health, safety and accessibility fixes in the 2017 bond, and I'm going to ask Superintendent Awad again to introduce the item.
I'd like to invite both Jerry Vincent and his team to make the report to the board. Thank you.
I don't know if they're going to turn on the PowerPoint, because all I have is, look at that, someone back there. So, so we're, you know, the board asked for an update on what we're doing this summer and this fall, but I thought especially with three new members, and I won't camp out on this, we presented to the board twice, but I thought you should see the background, so if you had questions about how come you're going there and why, when we get to what we're doing, we got a little bit of backdrop here to tell you how we got to that. So, I have part of our health and safety team here tonight, literally after May 16, when the lead and the water, by June, we had a team, we've met every week, Youssef's been part of that, so we have some of our team here tonight. Dr. John Burnham, we were so lucky to get him, he retired out of OHSU as a Director of Environmental Health and Safety for 23 years, he's going to go over a little bit of how we got to the criteria, the categorical, and then we're going to talk to two other members who we're going to bring up in the right time, so, John, why don't you just walk us through big picture, oh, I think I'm supposed to go this way, you tell me. Or maybe I don't. Oh, oh, oh. Okay, what do you want to do with that? I could do that. I could, okay, so, an overview of our process, go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking last time. Okay. So, Jerry was mistaken, we actually met daily-
Yeah, in the very beginning.
-for a few months, because of things coming at us right now, so, thanks, Jerry. Good evening, everyone, I'm John Burnham, I'm the interim Director of Environmental Health and Safety. My role tonight, very quickly for you, we thought it would be wise to provide the new members with a real quick executive summary of how we selected those eight different health and safety programs that went into the bond. So, the best way to describe that is to tell you with a real quick, the entire process. I came on board in the middle of July of 2016, one of my responsibilities that I was given was to do a gap analysis for the Environmental Health and Safety group, that was a group of three people working inside of PPS. I published that report in late 2016, and if you look at this slide, I found that that group was responsible for overseeing 57 different environmental health and safety programs. That's a lot of programs, but it's not unusual for a group, for a group, a institution that's big. Within that was, one program was lead and water, 56 other ones besides that. So, next slide there, Jerry, how did I, how did I do that gap analysis? This is the third one I've done, by the way, I've done one at PSU and also OHSU. There's a number of steps that I take, that I developed over the years, but the real bottom line here is those last two bullets, and that is that I use institutional risk as a driver to identify the needs of each of those 57 programs, and also those eight, which is, most of those are embedded in the 57. So, really, it's about institutional risk. Next slide. I just wanted to provide this to you in case you had some unusual interest in risk assessment, here's some of the resources I've used over the years, I'm not going to cover those with you, but I wanted to show them to you.
I did want John to put these in here, because one of the things the boards talked about since that, that fateful day was, what are we doing in terms of not enough people, overworked and best practices? So, we could probably just rest on John alone, his 23 years, if you can do this for OHSU, you can certainly do that here, but in addition to John's background, he relied on these kind of resources for best practices and how we go out and how we got what we have, so we didn't just make this up in a back room somewhere.
No, not at all. Yeah, I, this is, this is, I developed this process over 23 years, next slide.
I'm trying, John. Maybe the battery's low.
It'll work, there we go. So, I, I use what is called, the development, the procedure I developed over the years, I call it a, a multi-category risk assessment, because what I found is that although EHS is heavily regulatory-driven in reality, there are lots of other impacts they can have on an organization. I saw that at OHSU, reputational risk is a major issue, for example, at OHSU or at PSU, and oftentimes, EHS people don't really look at that very carefully, so that's one of my six categories, I don't want to go into detail here. This is actually severity, if you know much about risk assessment, you have to combine this with something about frequency or probability. We do have frequency information on a lot of the programs that we're working with, for example, how often do we have a serious fire? You can get some idea about frequency and combine that with this kind of information. So, bottom line is, I use the institutional risk approach to inform the gap analysis and what the needs were there, but also those eight items that were on the bond, that's really the bottom line here. The next two slides give you a little bit more insight into the process.
What this does for us is start to move, you'll see with the next few slides, an item that might be emotional to some, to what's the probable, what's the probability of that happening, because that's really where we're measuring risk, is the probability end of it, so.
By the way, the, the four board members that were previously on the board, and three of them here tonight, saw me give a 30-minute talk about the gap analysis alone, so I'm covering this like a rocket-
Three, yeah.
-really, really quick, but it's an executive summary. So, I, I think this will help the new board members understand the multi-category approach, I want to keep it really practical, so when you look at these definitions, I'm going to cover them based on what we know about lead and water and the impact it had on our institution. So, take a look at each one of these, I'm not going to read them exactly, but financial risk, you know, the impact of inadequately managing that program by EHS, millions of dollars for the organization. Operational risk, we shut down our drinking water, put in bottled water, and shut down our kitchens, which, by the way, they came back up quickly, we had some good thinking there, and we put those back in, on, online in October. Reputational risk, what do I need to say about that, all the articles I've written and so forth. By the way, I think we've made a tremendous amount of progress there, not just through me, but a lot of people in this room had a major impact on bringing back our credibility, and the bond was proof of that. So, the last slide I have here on this set, these are the six risk categories once again. Lead and the water, just to give you the example.
Do you have a question?
Oh, this is the last one.
Do you mind if we jump in with questions, or would you rather?
Back one.
No, please.
So, question?
We're going to test six more questions.
Sure, Rita.
So, on the human health and safety risk?
Yes.
When you do that assessment, do you take into consideration the specific populations that are, that could be at risk? So, for example, young children are more vulnerable to lead?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you have to look at the toxicology in the case of lead, for example, and you need to look at, at the population, in fact, that's one of my comments coming here. So, let's talk about lead and water real quick and human health and safety. It's unlikely that lead and water in our drinking fountains is going to be the major source of lead exposure, especially for the young people, really young people in our, in our, in our, in our, our schools. There, if you talk to the county, you'll find out there's many other sources outside the school system, but we certainly want to minimize the exposure to lead in our schools, right? So, that's why it's there.
Part of your risk and then in your gap analysis talked about how when we start to roll things out, how it's at the K3 level where they're most vulnerable, so it's covered in our detailed one that's on our website, that's part of the large analysis, which is part of the more detailed, probably two PowerPoints by now have landed there, so it's a great question.
A greater risk would be the lead paint chips, for example, especially at home. So, environmental risk, you can't measure environmental risk at 15 parts per bay, and so it's a non-issue. Regulatory risk, in the spring of 2016, there were no state, federal, or local regulations on lead and water in our schools, and yet, look what happened to the institution, it's pretty amazing. That's why I really look at all six of these categories, because you never know which one's going to be most important. It's not just human health and safety and regulatory, it's everything, so.
So-
Bottom line is, I just want to summarize it now, bottom line is, what drove the gap analysis for me, and also the bond, those eight items, was the institutional risk on those items, so.
Stay put, so those items reduced themselves into this being brought before the board and the B-SAG, and then we had, as you may recall, three different levels, 151, 152 million, so this is what went forward and into the, to the bond, and then we started, John, talking about, let's pass this bond and let's talk about what's leading to what we're doing right now in terms of factors for rolling it out. I don't know why this thing is here, right here, okay, so let's talk about some of these priority methods we are using for this summer immediate work that we're going to talk about in a minute, and the intermediate work. Some of this is also in our intermediate to long-term is where we're going to have focus groups, and we're going to talk about some of this, tell them what our rationale was and how this is rolled out and then get feedback, but go ahead and cover some of what some of these mean. Some of them are obvious, some are not as obvious.
So, we sat down as a group to look at all of these eight items and decide how to fund them, basically. We looked at the six different approaches possible, we threw out across the board very quickly, because if you just take 150 million divided by eight, it just doesn't make sense for what these different programs are, so that got thrown out. The biggest drivers were catastrophic lift, I mean, for our life's safety, you could have multiple casualties in that situation. Public awareness, the, the, the surveys showed very clearly that lead and water and lead paint were big issues. Operational savings, roofs can prevent other issues from occurring, not just leaks, and then readily accessible is right on.
Water too, I mean, the water, operational money coming back to the program, you know, for changes made, yeah.
So, we use the combination of all those last five-
Yeah.
-to come up with how to, how to allocate funding in that 150 million.
All right, thanks, John, and while Joe's, and while Joe's coming up, I want to talk about, so, we, we take those items that John's covered, we put them into these variables right here, and start to get into a prioritization process, and I just thought I'd show you one, we're going to, of what this looks like, we just chose roofs, and when you apply everything John did through gap analysis, in through the priorities, in through the measurements of risk, it looks something like this, this is just roofs, for example, we have what our variables are, we have listed what the risk is, what our indicator is, how we assign numeric values to that with folks from the industry, some experts in there, and when you're done with that, it's still a roof that's prioritized, we still need to take the PPS part and put it on top of that, which is our equity-based value put on these and how to roll these out district-wide, so they're not all done in one area versus another. This is the way we're set up right now, and where we are to date with the progress that we've made. I asked, asked Joe, one of our other safety members from day one is Joe Crowley, our Director of Risk Management, we have three departments that are coming together to do this health and safety work, we have our facilities and asset management department, we have our risk department, and then we have our Office of School of Modernization, as it rolls from our immediate and intermediate into our bond by fall, and we have Senior Director Dan Young here as well. So, I'm the COO that oversees that, manages that, but we have three main departments that are doing this work. So, I thought I'd talk, some of these things are risk management-driven and led, and I thought I'd ask Joe to talk about what his are. Oh, I'm sorry, just one more, so I discovered this, so this is how the work is flowing out, we have immediate largely being done this summer, right now, or completed this summer, a little into the fall, intermediate largely between this fall and it starts into the summer, somewhere in those bid packages and projects as we set those up, they roll into OSM, and then we have our future, which is the long-term, that's what we're doing, seven, seven and a half years all the way out to the end of the bond right now is our workflow progress.
So, just a question about the, those three rankings, so, if you're a parent and the items in your school don't fit in the immediate category, but they fit in the intermediate category, which looks like it's going to happen between this fall and next summer, how would you know if there is an existing risk still, or health and safety issue at your school, and what generally, things are we communicating to parents about how that's being mitigated?
Yeah, so, it's a great question, and it's going to be, we're going to have to look at many different ways to deliver that message so people get it, it's not just we posted on our website, it's how did we get that specifically out to you, whether that's flyer, or that's by email, group. So, the communications part of rolling out, the, the low-hanging fruit, we're going to show you what we're doing right now is, is going out, we have a part of our, sorry, one of our health and safety from day one has been our public relations department, SIPA. So, two things that they have been invaluable in- So two things that they have been invaluable in, we're the experts in the area. They say, if I can't understand that, a board member or a parent probably can understand that. I think I would say that differently if I was you. And then they work with us on how to message these items as they're coming out. So that's actually, the next thing we need to do is message where we're going, message what we're in the middle of it, and then message how we've wrapped it up and what's tested out fine, and what is now complete at that site. So that's a plan that's still being worked on. We wanted an update for tonight, but I got to be honest with you, there's a lot of work to do in that area, and we need some input. Yeah, oh, thank you.
Madam Chairperson, members of the board, good evening. My name is Joe Crellier, Director of Risk Management. I have about eight slides to go over with regarding radon mitigation systems and asbestos. Quick background, radon is a naturally occurring radioactive gas, a long-term health hazard. The Oregon Health Authority and the New Healthy and Safe Schools Act require testing in schools every five years where a mitigation system has been installed. If there is no mitigation system needed, we're still now required to test every 10 years. The systems that we are installing, we are requiring a 10-year warranty from the companies that provide those. And this allows us to have another opportunity to capture two of those five-year tests within the warranty period, and, you know, effectively keeping the burden of effectiveness on the vendor that designed and installed the system.
Can I ask a question about that, real quick?
Yes.
So, as I understand it, from what you've explained in the past, the radon risk can kind of shift from year to year. Things can change over time, and you can mitigate what you've got right now, but two years later, there may be something else, right? Did I, am I getting, okay.
Overall, it's pretty good.
So, so for this, for this warranty, does that mean if we discover two, three years down the road, that we now have a different problem? Is that covered under the warranty?
In a general sense, yes, it would. The radon is viewed as seasonal, and so what's defined as the winter heating season is via the protocol of the certified radon inspectors and mitigation companies, they can design and install now, we can measure now, but it's during that winter heating season that they will confirm that we're below the four pico curries per liter. And it's only during that validation that they'll put their warranty on it. And so, yes, if they, if we do our five-year required test and it's above four, they would have to honor the warranty, and the warranty is on the radon level, not just the system itself. Some exceptions would be if we, as a district, initiate construction on a site.
Okay.
When construction is initiated, and we have an example right now with Cesar Chavez, we had one room validated for the need for a radon system, but we have an external elevator being installed right now. And so the groundwork is, the ground is being disturbed, the foundation. And so when that work is complete, we will redo the testing of all the occupied ground level rooms, because, you know, it could be gone, or there could be more rooms.
But that invalidates the warranty, right?
In that particular case, there's no system in place. We've been able to validate. More background, for last winter heating season, we, as a district, we contracted, and we had all regularly occupied ground rooms, ground level rooms, have their initial short-term radon test, and then additional testing as warranted. So that was a little over $100,000 and an entire season of testing to get us to where we are now, so that we know where the mitigation systems are needed, and we can, and we were ready when the bond was approved with locations.
And those warranties roll out in the original scope of work. If we have three areas identified at MEAC, and then a fourth one obviously crops up later on with a test, that wouldn't be part of the warranty. That was outside, where we know, knew at that time and the work that was performed at that time. That's a great question. And by the way, in terms of rolling out the message, we needed tonight in order to message out to the parents exactly what we're showing you. We just thought it'd be a good idea that you didn't read about this through the paper or through an email blast, and board members actually heard first what we wanted to say to you. So SIPA's been part of writing this up in a draft right now and how we're going to roll this out, so. Okay, so go ahead and talk about it.
Just to clarify then, every school will be tested on a rotating, sort of a five-year basis going forward?
Correct. Going forward with the New Healthy and Safe Schools Act, Oregon Health Authority guidelines were published last year. So even in schools where radon levels were low and did not warrant mitigation, they do now require testing every 10 years. So that would be the, that would be the longest interval between testing, would be 10 years.
Okay.
Five years if there's a mitigation system installed.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
On this slide, we're illustrating what's recently completed, and these are three locations where a permanent mitigation system is now in place. Meek Cafeteria, Lent Office, and then Lent Music Room, which is a separate building, but is tied to the main building. The utilities are tied to the same. Average cost, you can see real quick math here, is about 20 grand per mitigation system. When forecasting the bond, we use a rough estimate of 30,000 per location. This is a small sample set, so we'll still kind of watch that and see if the average cost is, remains low. Just depends on the complicated systems, and larger buildings, thicker walls, basements versus maybe a single-level building. Currently, we have design validations in progress for Skyline Room 105A, Oakley Green, the gym, the adjacent PE office, and the adjacent dance room, which is all contained in a north wing of Oakley Green. A validation system is a mitigation system that is in place and is effective. With these in particular, once we're in the winter heating season, those vendors can validate with certainty that their design works, put a warranty on it. The design systems are usually compromised comprised of permanent parts and some non-permanent parts. They will wait to go through a roof penetration and use maybe a window or some other kind of vent to validate the air movement and all those things that they're doing before committing to the construction there. But those are systems that are in place and going. With the results that we were able to get for that, over that entire season of testing, we now have 26 rooms in 15 schools that are validated and need radon mitigation. And we have a project manager assigned to that, and those are going to go out in about two or three groups of bids. The qualified vendors, now qualified, still have to provide a quote on each one. Tomorrow morning, for example, the companies are doing a walkthrough at Jefferson. There are two locations, two separate locations at Jefferson High School that have been validated as needing radon mitigation. So that will be, in fact, two, two systems, and that walkthrough is tomorrow. The 26 rooms, once again, we'll communicate that with the assistance of SIPA. But that, we will see additional.
Yeah, one of the issues with that is, well, you've heard me say it with other things, who's bidding the work? How many people turn in a number? And is the number anywhere near reasonable? So when we say we're going to get to 15 schools and we're going to start right away, we know we're going to start right away, we're going to get to 15 schools as soon as we can with a March 18. But it's just, it's just brutal out there right now, trying to find labor and find companies. A lot of them, even with large scopes of work, aren't even returning the phone call, back to the general contractor, whether they're interested or not. They're just not even returning those calls. They don't need to. But this is the plan of how we're going to roll this out, yeah.
And we will see repeated radon mitigation at Oakley Green and Meak. Other locations within the school are now validated as also needing radon mitigation. So those, those schools in particular will, will see more.
The district has an open position right now for our permanent Director of Our Mental Health and Safety. So we're trying to get that filled. Dr. John has stayed on. He was with us through the end of year at this point. So we're trying our best to get that position filled. That reports directly to Joe. That was one of the things that came out of facilities, asset management, and lies with the risk department, which makes a lot more sense having it there. And then asbestos, all those kind of things, playground safety, a lot of those are under the risk management right now, and they make more sense to be there. So with that, that's exactly why Joe's going to give us an asbestos update. If you have any further questions on radon? Okay. Has a mind of its own?
Okay. Quick background, asbestos is a naturally occurring mineral fiber, occurs in rock and soil. It's been used for many years for fireproofing, insulation, building material. It's also a long-term health hazard, also a respiratory hazard. At Portland Public Schools, we have 2,412 recorded applications of asbestos use. We call it ACM, asbestos-containing material, or asbestos-containing building material. That's in a database that has been populated since 1988, and in the last few years, been upgraded to a more robust database system. We have six local asbestos abatement firms on contract now. So as we put these jobs out to bid, those qualified vendors will be the ones that have to walk the site and provide a quote. With each abatement, per the regulations, there is a proof of clearance, clearance of the air by an independent third party.
We just want, you know, we will also communicate the word out to the principals, to the public, but we don't reoccupy until we get a clearance test, you know? And we don't rely on the clearance test being done by the one who did the work. Thank you very much. So, and these first two just look like bullets, 2,400 to six firms. It took a lot of work to get six firms all the way through the process and onboard, and to identify, which is actually part of the bond measure, the 2,400 items right there.
So our immediates, immediate, which is hopefully by the end of summer 2017, small abatement projects, usually these are the removal of pipe insulation. Couple examples, Wilson Auditorium Prop Room, Buckman Basement. Also pre-2017 bond, small-scale abatement projects were done as needed, as budgets allowed. And then, of course, the, these small projects, you don't occupy the school. And so some are small enough, they can be done on a weekend, and still get the clearance of the air and the negative pressure setup for the room and all that. And then pre-2017 bond, abatement was also done whenever called for in a repair or a construction project. Okay, currently, and currently as fall of 17 through the beginning of the 2018 summer, asbestos-containing material tile flooring replacement at Stevenson, Sitten, and Beaumont Cafeteria. The Sitten project is actually underway with crews on site right now. Stevenson is underway in a different fashion. The floor, the subfloor is actually, the project manager reports that it has a curve to it, sagging. And so there's engineering going on to brace it from below and make it a proper and true floor, so that the asbestos tile can be replaced and the next tile won't be, won't be compromised by that. Beaumont Cafeteria is currently being scoped for bid and should be a Christmas break project. All the modernization projects, when existing structure is being upgraded, all asbestos abatement is being done on those. And then, once again, whenever integral to a minor construction or a repair, asbestos abatement is happening.
These projects already came through the facilities asset management vetting, the FAM department, either through prioritization through the work order, which turned it into a project, which turned it in to Equity Lens. This is some of that work that was already set up. We can do this work. There's the things that could be done over summer. There's the things that extend a little bit further, could be swing shift, could be weekend shift. And then as we start to drift out into intermediate into long-term, there's more involvement, there's more stakeholders. Let's get the principals back, and let's talk to them. We have to go to our civic, you know, use of buildings folks and say, what was scheduled at those ones? We either need to cancel that, we're going to go over here, so we don't have to cancel that major event, and then we'll come back after that. So that's where the more thought-out process is on how we go forward with intermediate in the future.
Future asbestos abatement defined as most likely summer of 2018. We will be looking forward to abatement projects of significant square footage, and these are going to be large flooring matters, significant square footage, we're talking 20,000, 30,000 or more square footage of ceiling tile that is asbestos-containing, flooring tile, and also spray-on fireproofing. Jackson Middle School, for example, the drop ceiling above the auditorium is all spray-on fireproofing of asbestos-containing material. So it's stable, but it's the most, it's the least desirable application of asbestos-containing material. It is easily damaged, and it's friable, breakable by hand power. So those are, the bidding and the planning is very large scale when you have to enclose an entire large area like that. So those will be in the works now, but for the planning and bidding. Examples here, Harrison Park, Jason Lee, Jackson, that I mentioned, and Holiday Anics.
So future projects in each one of these areas, asbestos, water, some of that starts to go, they might be individual bid projects based on the market and availability of folks that do just this. They also roll to OSM in terms of economies of scale, where now we have architect, engineer, we have a bid package, we're going out to that school to do some of that fire sprinkler, some of that fire alarm, this radon, that asbestos, and, you know, we're putting more things together into the packages. So that's more of that laid-out plan that's going on this ball, and that's how we roll for the future, you know, year 0.5 of the bond out to year eight. Any questions of Joe on asbestos? Otherwise, we'll have Steve come up and talk about water next.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I know some of this stuff is dry, but it's important. It's not pictures of big fancy buildings, I know that. But it's important. Steve Afros is our Senior Project Manager in Facilities Asset Management. You're also looking at our Senior Project Manager, who's going to be overseeing the Kellogg Project, and the teardown, and the brand-new, but he's wearing a water hat and a lead hat and a couple other different hats for us right now. So Steve's just going to give you an overview, we're not going to read the whole, the whole slide here, but he's going to give you an overview of a little where we're, what we've done so far and why that, why that rolls into the plan that we're setting up right now.
Thank you. So, beginning with the water quality projects, over the last year, we've been working with CH2M, our consultant, testing and evaluating over 10,000 fixtures. We've gone through a process of determining the level of service, that is, how many potable water fixtures does each school need to operate? We've reduced that total number down to a little over 1,200 fixtures that we're addressing directly. We've coming up, coming up with a plan to basically implement the replacement of those fixtures, and if necessary, doing partial pipe replacements. So in the past few months, we've been developing an RFP process. We've had a number of contractors that have responded, and we selected four contractors that have been pre-qualified to do this work. And now we're doing essentially a summer rollout, summer slash fall rollout, where we're bidding out what is called Phase A fixture replacement. And we've decided to select, and you can actually move to the next.
Oh, now it works. Sorry. I'm trying.
We've decided to select a cross-section of schools that also have no summer program, so that we can get into these immediately.
So this, you know, we're going to go through the entire district, all the faucets. So from an equity standpoint, we're going to each one of our clusters. We're taking two schools, either, you know, of the ones that we either have, you know, most fixtures underserved, we're going to everything. So everyone's going to, we're going to get there. This is the rollout, some of it's based on the criteria that Steve just mentioned. We'll have four contractors. The issue is, can they perform, or are they overwhelmed? And we're not going to let them do any more until we see how they handle this. And then we, of course, have to coordinate back to the sites again with water down on the site, water back up again. So this is our rollout plan thus far, yes.
So I have a question about that in terms of capacity, because when last we spoke about this as a full board, the bids had come in, but we were in the process. about this as a full board, the bids had come in, but we were in the process of evaluating how much work would go to each of the contractors based on our confidence in their ability to get it done in a timely fashion. So what can you say more deeply about that and how much work we're getting done and how constrained we might be by the marketplace?
So we actually had a meeting today with Day CPM, who's our construction manager, who's going to help oversee this process because of a lot of the other things that Steve's doing for us. And so we wanted the criteria of how to, you know, as construction experts, how to measure what the industry says that they should be able to do and how many they can do, you know, and what their progress should be. One of the first things is evaluating, getting a schedule from them. How are you going to get to these schools? What do you think your timeframe is and when you're going to start and when you're going to finish? And then we're going to stop in. They have a separate person, a project manager, who's going to pop in on site. We have to come through fingerprinting, those kind of things, or not if it's off-hours. And then we have to come up with what we believe their schedule is accurate or not accurate, and how fast they're going to move through the sites. We did want eight contractors. We got four. We want one for each cluster so we can move faster. We have four. We're letting them out slowly. If some of these really respond, we'll give them more than four schools, we'll move them into another cluster. Our goal is to try to get this done by next spring and get through this. So you can see what's kind of coming up. We do our next round of water testing again, see who completely clears, and water back on and communicate that. And, or we decide that it's still an issue where we close down or remove fountains and get into the pipes. But, so we, we're asking them what they believe they can do right now. Amy, to answer your question, we need to see them working and watch them to see if they're coming anywhere close to what they say they can accomplish. So that's our next thing, what can they really do?
Can I ask a
I'm trying.
...question about the selection of these sites? So I thought I understood from what you had told us before, that a lot of the decision about which schools to start with was being driven by an agreement, a pre-existing agreement with the city?
You're close. We're going to get there. That has to do with fire alarm.
Ah, okay. So, so can you say a little bit more about how these schools were chosen?
So this was simply, these are the schools that are available in terms of not having programs operating them over the summer. So in some ways, this was both a cross-section geographically, we wanted to look at every cluster in the district, but also we wanted to be able to move quickly so we didn't impact summer programs that are occurring throughout schools in the district. So these are the ones that's essentially the low-hanging fruit of that cross-section.
And I'll just, I'll say it again, a May bond is strange because you have a May bond and you're trying to do something over summer while everybody's gone. So September, they don't come back and say, I can't believe you didn't do anything over the summer. And that's exactly it. So we're rolling out where we can roll out over the summer. The greater input, greater listening session, and the immediate and the long-term, you know, if it was a November bond, you've already had plans, you already have ideas, you've already communicated, you're rolling out. Literally from a May 17 until June 17 or so, you're trying to put something together to get out there and get something done.
Okay, thanks.
Good question.
So Jerry has gone over most of this in terms of what happens. The fixtures pass, then they go into service. If they don't, then they have a secondary process where we would determine if a fixture is necessary in terms of a level of service, and then we would proceed into designing a partial pipe replacement. And then it gets tested again.
So an example, if there's, if there's, if there's 300 fixtures on a site, they all test well except two. We don't see any operational reason why we can't, depending geographical where they're at, disconnect those and cap them off and get that school back up and running. You know, if there's one where there's 300 fixtures and 200 aren't testing well, it's got to come from the pipe then. It must not be the fixture replacement is the only issue. They stay on bottled water. We roll to the next phase, which is analyzing some of the pipes underground, deciding how we either have to replace and abandon the pipe or dig it up and put a new one in, back out to the street. So that's what this process right here is. Is this a battery issue with this thing? Am I batteryed?
Yeah, I can do it.
All right. Thanks.
I think we've basically gone over this.
Sorry, he's just, can you hit the next one?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. There you go. Any questions about water? So it's the same thing. We have our, we have our immediate right now. We have our intermediate, which is, this is still, we're trying to get to 90 sites. So the immediate, intermediate kind of rolls from right now all the way into next spring. It's a little bit different on the, and then we switch right into, the future would be after testing them, and then if any come up bad, what our next step is on that. If it's minor, take them off. If not, they roll to a future. So if you have any more questions, we're going to lead paint.
So as part of the lead paint project, last year, as you're probably aware, PBS Environmental and Engineering conducted a comprehensive survey of all painted building surfaces in the district. They identified close to 1 million square feet of deteriorated paint. So what's happening now, on the exterior, PBS began identifying four sites throughout the district with the highest amount of deteriorated paint on the exterior. These are typically wood-sided buildings, so they have the greatest risk of that deterioration. Those sites are Astor, Atkinson, Hayhurst, and Woodstock. So this work was contracted in the spring and is currently underway and will be completed in a few weeks. So those are pretty substantial projects. I think close to half a million dollars' worth of work.
Just over. And, you know, with the rainy season on record the last two years, these wood, these wood buildings went even faster than they should have.
In terms of the, yeah, in terms of the interior, we've hired five new internal painters that are currently doing interior lead paint containment work. And we've identified 20 sites with the most deteriorated interior paint to begin work this summer. The summer work has been prioritized based on the absence of summer programs as well as providing the greatest equity and geographic representation. So that's essentially the list that you see in the order is based on some of that input in terms of equity and representation.
Just a question about the summer programs issue. So I'm assuming next year, in advance, there'll be instructions to schools that didn't have it addressed this year to have their summer programs in other schools or not to have summer programs so that
Absolutely.
You can cycle that in.
Exactly.
Any questions about lead paint? We have, we have our, we have our fire alarm expert coming up now. This is Steve Afros. He's our senior manager. He's also our fire alarm person.
So I've actually been working closely with the fire alarm staff here at PPS. And this, the fire alarm approach starts with the 2016 agreement between PPS and Portland Fire and Rescue. That agreement includes groups and phases of work based on addressing the oldest fire alarm systems first. So in terms of what's happening now, the district fire alarm staff have completed fire alarm control panel replacements of all of the first group of schools with subsequent group and phasing underway. And a critical next step that we're undertaking is that we've met with initially the fire marshal, and we're going to have a follow-up meeting to discuss the most effective way to coordinate the current PPS fire alarm staff work with future bond-funded contracted work so that it can be completed as efficiently as possible. As part of the
I'm sorry, questions about fire alarm? I mean, we've been rolling out, we've been doing it. We were doing it prior to the bond. We're just going to keep on doing it. It could get done a lot faster coming in instead of our crews in the 18 and forward where it becomes part of our OSM. We're going out there and doing everything. But we've been doing it and making progress well before the bond ever passed. Oops, sorry.
Finally, as part of the fire sprinkler system scope, the prioritization of that is actually quite similar to the roof replacement prioritization. We look at prioritizing based on a set of criteria. And those, in this case, include the existing sprinkler coverage percentage with its associated risk of fire and smoke spreading, the type of construction of the building with its associated risk of, again, of fire and smoke spreading. Obviously, we're focused primarily on wood, wood frame structures. We look at the type of occupants, so particularly younger children have more limited ability to safely exit the building in the event of a fire. And then finally, we look at exiting overall and particularly when there are multiple stories. And that obviously limits everyone's ability to safely exit. So we've actually used that system to rank and prioritize the work. But part of this, I think, like a lot of the other components, is figuring out how to package that work either individually or as part of larger projects.
Right. What we don't want to do is take eight categories, environmental, health, and safety, and take the site offline eight different times and disrupt their education out there. We're also not going to get any economies of scale. So a lot of this will roll into our big-picture package of how we go around and how we work on the buildings. This is more of our long-term. Any questions on fire sprinklers? It's, you know, when you look at Dr. John's analysis, you go with probability and fire alarm and fire sprinkler affecting, you know, the classroom and the occupants of the building are a higher probability. And then you have asbestos when loose and radon undetected taken care of. You're getting into probabilities. And, you know, what it really is, it's, a lot of this is coming down to this is a priority one, and this is a 1A, and this is a 1B, and this is a 1C. They're all priority one, but this is how we're approaching this. What can we do now? What makes sense cost-wise to be part of a bigger picture? Our mind's already on the 158 million and how it needs to stretch, right? And that going out and doing a series of one-offs as well. So, anything for Steve?
So just, just to close back to kind of what we opened with is, now you're looking at how do you take what you're doing and relatively briefly, but thoroughly enough, explain that to the public and parents and...
So that's it. So with tonight and the feedback that we have, I will sit down in the morning with Sipa and talk about how we talk about the accomplishments of this summer, what's coming this fall. What I do want, I just want to run through this because it answers one of your questions. You know, I just did a summary of what we've done in just a couple of months since the bond was passed. And we've done some prioritization. We have more to go. We're in the intermediate and immediate right now. Scoping, Dan and his team are on the long range with some of this looks like as our other project managers come available by September, October, off of the summer work they're doing right now. So from the stakeholder advisory group, I talked earlier about some focus group on some of these things. So one of the things I'd like to do for August, I thought about this, is start with an invite. We're going to do this with our master plan community groups, say who would like to become a DAG Design Advisory Group member for our new projects first, and then backfill with some community people. I'd like to get out to the VSAG, the Bond Stakeholder Advisory Group, next month with an open invite if the board, if the board wishes, and see how many want to be part of our H&amp;S. They were part of the work up for the bond, so they already get a lot of this. How many want to be part of that H&amp;S review of our methodology long-term, where we're going, why we're going. Backfill that with some other experts from, and community input. But I wanted to first put that input out there to the stakeholder. We have like 31 people. If 20 say they'd like to continue on and they'd like to be part of this. I'm working on a charter of what we're asking them to do in one or two quick meetings, and then maybe a yearly follow-up to take a look at and advise on the next because these things are going to be deteriorating, not going to get any better. And people's positions and where they're at might change in some of these items. So that was my first thought on the rollout. Any comments on starting with, with that group?
I don't have a comment about, necessarily about the stakeholder group, but just in the, sort of the format of the communication. So I think this is a really useful tool that walks through sort of the risks and the approach and overall what's happening. What I think, sort of a complimentary piece of communication is, for most parents, it's not going to matter what's happening at the 80 other schools. It's going to be their individual student school. So thinking about, this is sort of for a general audience, which is really important, the taxpayers, community members, and then something very specific that in my school, you know, what's the status of the lead in the paint, the lead in the water, because at the end of the day, that's probably going to be the most relevant factor and obviously translated as well, so it's accessible to the broader community.
Yeah, and you had something like that, Jerry, for the bond where it was really easy. It was a map and you, and it was coded and you could see right away who got a lab, who got a roof. And I think that's
Right. The only thing I'd like to change with that is that was the plan and it got known as a promise. So if we didn't go, you broke a promise. And it was a plan. You got to have, there's a huge difference between a plan and a promise. I need everyone's help messaging that with this bond or it's going to be a long bond. Thank you. Yeah, but it helped people know, they identified immediately with it. Anytime I got a phone call as a new person, they talked about that map. They knew exactly about that map. That map worked. It's just how we messaged that map, but the map worked. Yeah. You're right. Anything else? I know it's not exciting stuff, but it's important stuff.
Oh, no. It's, it is exciting.
It's on all the fancy pictures of the new playgrounds and everything. All right. Thank you very much.
And then we're also have announced our committees and the Health, Safety, and Accessibility Committee, I think is a committee that your future quarterly reports will go to and will ask you to work with that, closely with that committee. And we're designing it so that we're being able to highlight something that was really important to the broader community in the bond.
Yeah, thank you. So the two items that were not covered tonight, fencing and security, I need to get the other with some principal. I don't want to turn into 85 schools of one-off. I could use a camera here and there where it's not very efficient. That was our one that was really the least, I'll just say it, our research and everything was the least. And it's going to take some more time this fall when everybody gets back to put that package together. ADA I didn't talk about because it's on its own path to come back to you, as you just said, through a community input transition plan, first read back to you in November. Any input from you, come back in December for a final. That's going to be its own update to you guys over time.
Thank you for the whole team.
Thanks.
A lot of hard work.
So earlier this evening, the board participated in a training session on public meeting requirements. And tonight, we're going to have a complimentary session here at our board meeting on public records and both public meeting requirements and public record law guide and service parameters for our board operations. I'd like to ask Anna Richter-Taylor, the interim chief of communications, and Jim Harris, the general counsel, to provide an update on the topics.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me? Okay. So we have been looking at the public records issue for the last six months pretty intensely. Just to run, I guess my purpose here today is
to run through some of the work that we've been doing and then get some direction from you as to which committee we can ultimately work with to finalize. Some recommendations to you as a board on revisions to the policy. So I can just start quickly with the history. The last policy was updated in 2002, so it's quite old. It's very dated. The public records responsibility historically, I'm sorry, do I click this? Sorry. Okay, sorry. The public records responsibility was in the legal counsel historically. And if you look at, and I have a slide here that didn't make it into PowerPoint, but if you look at the volume of requests, it's grown, let's see, in 2014 to 15, it was a total of 43 requests in one calendar year. It's grown to 221 during the 2015-16 year, and so far we're at 306. So, and more than half of those are from the media. So as we were looking at ways to improve the internal process and where public records should be housed, given that the vast majority is from the media, we, our recommendation was to bring the public records function into the communications office, obviously in coordination with legal counsel for appropriate review. And I think that, you know, looking as well over the growth, the volume, as well as the internal operations and practices, it has lacked clarity, I think internally as an organization, as well as externally to those seeking records. So that's one of the things that we definitely want to focus on is establishing some clarity and consistency going forward. Anything to add? As, as we look at the need assessment, one is to restore PPS's image as transparent, accessible, and accountable. I think that that's very important. And I think the public records process and accessibility to those records for the general public as well as the media is an important part of that. We need to update the board policy to reflect the district commitment to these goals of transparency and accessibility of information. Like I said, the policy's very dated and does not reflect that adequately. And to that end, we need to update the administrative directive to implement the policy and provide clarity on process fees and restrictions under FERPA, as well as formalize the internal process for collection and response to public records requests. That's something that also lacks clarity is that we can receive a request and then it's a matter of understanding not only where the it's a matter of understanding not only where the records are possessed and then how, whose responsibility is to retrieve them so that we can have the appropriate review and be responsive. So, that's something that along with the policy as well as AD, internal operational direction will be improved. We have hired a public records officer, which is a first step in this, which has been fantastic, and the public records responsibility is now in the communications office. We have established some informal protocols for collection and response to requests, but it's informal at this point. We need to formalize it, and a lot of that, like I said, comes from the policy and the AD. We have, our response time has improved. It's not where we want it to be, and again, some of that is around the clarity internally of the responsibility of the various departments to retrieve, to access the records that we're seeking in a timely way, and everybody's working very hard and very busy, but it's just a matter of establishing that clarity of roles and responsibilities in the other departments too. And some of that ties into Senate Bill 481, which provides new timelines around that and expectations for acknowledgement of receipt of a request, which again, Ryan, Ryan Van De Hey, the new public records officer is fantastic in doing that, but there's new timelines associated as well with, along with what the new law says is acknowledging receipt of request includes acknowledging whether you possess the records that are being requested, and so that's an internal function that we're going to have to get right because we only have five days to do that, and then 10 days subsequent to that to respond, to fulfill the request with various caveats.
And did that law go into effect upon passage?
January 1, 2018. So, we have a little time, but still, we'd like to get, I mean, we are already operating toward that. It's not going to be a huge jump for us, which is good, but, and that's just a, you know, it will be helpful in providing internal guidance and expectations of staff, but we would like to even explore other ways to be more responsive and more transparent in general with the records that come in and out the door. Right now, we also have an internal public records work group that has been meeting and going through the current policies, AD, and as well as looking at the kinds of requests we're getting and really looking internally at where we're struggling with meeting those requests in a timely way so that we can, again, come to you with a recommendation and address it internally. So, our proposed next steps, it'd be great to have guidance from the board on the district mission and statement relating to public records to guide this next, to guide the work around the policy development and the AD. You know, I think that we have, and you can chime in, I think that I come from a communications background, which my, our, the communications office is probably on the side of let's release it all, but I know that there's also legal liabilities that we have to be respectful of, and so some direction around where those two conflict would be great from the board, as well as establishing an internal decision-making team when there does need to make, you know, a call needs to be made, and including the superintendent and that, and raising it to that level. So, the work group, we will finalize our assessment report, in which there's been a lot of research done about what other public agencies are doing and how they're addressing public records, who's doing it well, and give recommendations about where we think we can. You know, if it's being done well elsewhere, we don't need to recreate something new, so. And then we'd like to be able to present draft policy changes to reflect your position and discussion for feedback. Ultimately, we'd like to finalize this policy and AD and internal operation, operational protocols for implementation in August if we can get there. But again, our end goal is clarity of policy, process, and accessibility for all PPS employees, families, media, and others in the community, policies and practices that advance commitment to transparency, consistency and clarity in the application of state and federal laws relating to student and employee privacy, and ultimately fewer legal challenges, a faster response rate, and restored trust in PPS process.
If I could jump in on one item. I would mention, and I have done public records requests in other entities, the records requests here obviously are coming from a number of people with legal backgrounds, so the requests read more like discovery requests and litigation than they do as public records requests that most entities receive. So, in that regard, they're much more detailed and much more intensive, particularly when it comes to email and electronic communications. So, that's something to consider.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Just, this has been a lot of work, really appreciate it and getting back on track.
I think if you can come up with a policy and administrative director that accomplishes that goal, that would be a very good thing for the board and the district and the community. So, what I'd like to ask is if, it sounds like in August, you'll have some sort of draft ready to bring it to the board. We'll have maybe an initial discussion, you'll get some direction. Likely, we'll send it to the finance audit and operations committee for deeper committee work and go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before we leave, okay, since it's going to come to my committee, let me ask a question while I have you sitting here. Can you be a, can you elaborate a little bit more about what kind of direction you want from the board?
Well, I think that, I think that a mission statement around, I think direction in terms of if you believe that everything is public except for certain circumstances that are covered under FERPA, or, I mean, I think a lot of it is this rub where there are conditional exceptions and exemptions where we don't have to disclose something, but we can. So, is the board philosophy going to be just because we can withhold it and protect it, we should, or no? Just because we can does not mean we should. I mean, that is really kind of where most of the rub is and where the conflict is.
Okay, so we have license to philosophize. Excellent.
Does that help? Is that easier question?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing that draft. Next, I'd like to ask Director Bailey to provide an update on the superintendent recruitment process.
So, right away, as a semi-new board, I guess, we're facing a really major decision in terms of finding a new superintendent for us, and we appreciate Youssef stepping in into the breach in the meantime. Many people are aware that we tweaked the job description from the previous search, changed the search process somewhat, and so far, so good. It's been really exciting. We've had a good group that we did initial panel interviews with. We had a spirited discussion to winnow that group down to a second round that we're in the middle of right now. One of the things that we asked candidates to do in this round was to talk about how their experience and bring data from their current district around three of our key benchmarks, graduation rate, third grade literacy, and disparities in discipline, and to talk about how they've dealt with those and what kind of progress and they've made. So, do they have the history of making progress on those three benchmarks? And what types of strategies have they used? And that was led to a lot of robust discussion going forward. So, we're, I'll just say, speaking for myself, right? I'm very excited so far. We have some really great candidates. We're in a, it's a great place to be, to be choosing, making win-win choices. So far, so good, except for it was really hot in this building on Sunday. But, that's a small price to pay.
And it was really early.
For three of us, anyway.
Yeah, there's, we're finding out who's morning people and who aren't.
But we're here anyway.
Thank you. So, the next agenda item is going to, people can tell this, the first couple of meetings, we're focusing a lot on how we do our work and changing the processes by how we do our work and what our work is. And one of the items tonight is talking about sort of policy development. So, one of the key roles of the school board is to develop policy, and it's the board's role really to set the general direction and policy, and then the day-to-day management and the operational work is for the superintendent and the staff. But in order to be able to do our, the board to do its policy development work, we need to have it be accessible to, to board members, to school community, to staff. And right now, the policy manual's not really in a very usable form. It's online, it's about 20 different individual documents, it's not searchable. So, we've asked the superintendent, staff to get the policy manual in a form in which it's all one document, it's searchable, so that when community members, when parents, when principals have a question about district policy, they're able to be able to actually look at, go online and find out what applicable policy is so they can, if we're going to expect people to follow policy, they need to be able to find it. So, that'll be one of the first things we do is just get it in a searchable format.
That'll include administrative directives as well?
Yes.
So, because I, one of the things about administrative directives in the past is that it's, as an outsider, it seemed like they changed without notice, and I'd like to ensure that, and I don't know if that happened or not, it just seemed that way, but it would be good to make that process more transparent going forward as well.
Yeah, and I think probably why it seemed like it just happened is administrative directives are really the sort of administrative rules for implementing policy, and so it doesn't, most of them don't go through that same level of sort of rigorous board discussion, but well noted that when they change, they should come to the board.
They're crucial in terms of how things actually happen, and that's why it's important to make that as transparent as possible.
So, in the, as we look at the board policies that we're going to be working on, one of the first ones we're going to be working on is really what the policy related to the board's role and our responsibility. It hasn't been refreshed or reviewed in more than a decade, kind of like the public records request. So, the 2016-2017 board requested that a expert in sort of institutional board governance go through those policies and recommend some changes, some refreshes, and we have that now, so, and now that the board, the new board has been constituted, we need to go through those and decide whether we want to accept those changes and formally adopt them or make revisions. So, that'll be the very first policy we'll just get going in addition to our public records policy. In addition, another note about just the board's operations this school year is the board committees were released this morning. They're going to be posted on the website tomorrow along with jurisdictions, and board chairs can, and committees can start organizing their work. And I thought it worthwhile to talk just for a few minutes about how the committees are going to work, both for board members but also for staff, so that, because it'll feel differently, I think, than work that has happened before in the past. Resolutions may have come to the board, they get discussed at the board meeting and then voted on. We're going to have a process by which our committees do some deeper work on things that come before the board so that we're more intentional about our work. But really, the committees are going to be the places where planning, preparation, and foundational policy work of the board happen, and the work that will happen in the committees, but then it will come to the full board for discussion, so every board member will have an opportunity to participate in the discussion and adoption of policy. Roughly, here's how the committee process is going to work. So, issues comes to the board for consideration and action will be referred to a committee. Committee jurisdictions will be defined, and superintendent will, we've already had a discussion about designating a staff member or members who are on point to work with each of the committees, depending on the committee's jurisdiction, so there'll be somebody who has their responsibility, staff responsibility for a particular issue, teaching and learning is probably, we know, yes, we know what would be, assigned to your committee. The committees will be asked to build, over the next two months, to build work plans with, using a common template for both work that the committee initiates, so some of the work will be work that the committee decided that they want to work on is going to be in their work plan, and then some of the work that will be referred to it from the full board. The expectation will be that committees will have annual work plans, calendars that are built by committee members in collaboration and informed by the designated staff. The work plan should have an annual calendar with set meeting dates and times, so really that the community can expect to know in advance when, say, for example, a particular audit may be coming up or something in teaching and learning around middle schools so that there's a calendar that's visible and people regularly scheduled meetings, ideally the times are going to be accessible to community members so they can attend. The meetings will be noticed and committee minutes will be available. One thing I guess I want to stress is that committees deliberate and make recommendations, so they're not making decisions on behalf of the board, they're making a recommendation to the full board. So, say something comes out of the teaching and learning committee, it's a recommendation to the full board for consideration. And we expect that there's going to be cases in which a particular issue, so we have a lot of complex issues that we're going to be working through this year, that sometimes that's going to require really close coordination between two committees. I'm going to use the sort of new middle schools as an example. A teaching and learning committee will have a, the sort of middle school programming and what's happening in those middle schools, but the enrollment and forecasting committee will be looking at the boundaries and how we're going to fill those middle schools, and so it'll be really important that the committee chairs and the committees take their work plans and that there be discussions across committees so that we've got sort of integrated and aligned work. And again, staff will be critical to this work. Let's see, the value of committee work will allow us to distribute our work and gain a level of depth and expertise that's greater than possible when the full board tries to sort of dig into each issue. And if a board member has a substantive issue for consideration for the board, it'll go through the committee process, which allows for greater transparency to the community, so people can raise issues. We'll have a other business section of our board meetings that if people want to raise an issue, that they can at the board meeting, it's not going to be decided, so it's not going to be decided during the other business section if somebody brings something, but it will likely be referred to the committee. And frankly, there's, I think when we look at what the work plans and we set priorities, that that's going to be a tool for us to decide things that are lesser priorities, that maybe we're going to set aside for next year, but really, it'll allow us to prioritize our work. But we will, there will be an opportunity for board members if they have something they want to bring to the board that, and have a committee consider that there'll be a mechanism for that. So, that's how our committees are going to, structure are going to work, and we, you know, just thank in advance the superintendent and the staff for the partnership because the board can't do its work without expertise and support from the staff, and likewise, we think it'll inform our work. So, I think people should buckle up. We've got a lot of work to do this year, and I thank you, everybody, for, in advance, for agreeing to a pretty aggressive agenda. So, that's all we have on our committee reports. Now, we're also going to have every board meeting an opportunity for, if there's a particular milestones or things that committee, committees want to flag for the rest of the board, there'll be an opportunity for committee reports. And since we haven't, we're just now getting our committees running, we don't yet have any committee reports, but we also, this will be an opportunity for if individual board members have attended conferences or participated in things, that it would be good for the rest of the board to have the benefit of their sort of wisdom or expertise or knowledge that they gained from attending... from attending a conference. And Superintendent Wad, it applies to you too. If you'd like to share something with the board, feel free to let us know if you want to do that. Tonight, we have, recently, Director Moore and Anthony attended the Oregon School Boards Association Summer Conference where they got, I think, updates on a number of new initiatives. So, although Director Anthony's on the phone, I think Director Moore is going to provide the report.
So, I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm probably going to read most of this, so bear with me. Paul Anthony and I attended the Oregon School Board Association Summer Conference from July 14th through 16th. And a personal note, this was my first contact with OSBA, and I have to say, I was pleasantly surprised. The quality of the presentations was really high. And it was, as a new board member, I found the information really, really useful. And the networking with board members from other districts was really fantastic, sharing lots of insights about best practices and, you know, common issues. So, I would encourage my colleagues to attend the fall conference. I was really impressed. And I was especially intrigued to learn that OSBA offers a library of sample policies and that they update on a regular basis contingent on legislative action that changes statute or, you know, any regulatory changes. So that as we review our own policies, we might want to consider looking at what OSBA has available. Okay. So, there were lots of sessions, and Paul and I tried to divide up attending the different sessions to kind of maximize our, the input we got. And there are a lot of things that I think were useful, and we're going to be providing materials from the sessions that we attended. In the interest of time, I'm just going to focus on some of the things that I think have broader interest among staff and the community. There was a lot of really good information that was, you know, kind of hot off the presses. We were just a couple of weeks after the end of the legislative session, so we got some, some long-awaited clarification about a number of things. So, I'm going to, I'm going to focus the time on those pieces. And I should also say, I didn't, Paul had better choices in his sessions, so what I'm about to say is coming from Paul. But since he's on the phone, I'm going to be, I'm going to be delivering it, but if there are any questions, they should be directed to Paul. Okay. So, OSBA staff provided an overview of the legislative session. And as we all know, there was no significant action on the revenue side, but there was some movement on cost containment. Most of the changes don't apply to school districts, and of the ones that do, most do not apply to PPS since they're related to PEB and OEB. Those are the benefits organizations. However, Senate Bill 1067 modified the law regarding PERS site accounts and contingency reserve funds, requiring greater public transparency and limiting reserve funds to $50 million. I should probably add, this is going to get pretty weedy. This is kind of detailed. Given the recent changes in the board, we'd like to ask the finance staff to review SB 1067 to ensure that we're in compliance and to give the board an update on our PERS reserve bonds. Staff from ODE presented on Oregon's implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act, also known as ESSA. This has significant implications for PPS, and the presentation reflected very recent First, both the old school rating systems, system and the S-BAC on which it was based are being scrapped by Oregon. The intent is that the new rating system will focus on equity, will support a more well-rounded education, will encourage cross-agency alignment, will go to greater lengths to involve parents, families, and communities and our schools, and the education of our children will give greater funding flexibility and will give a greater comprehensive needs assessment. The new rating system uses labels, quote, "comprehensive support," and the initials there is CSI, replacing the old priority schools and targeted support, replacing the old focus schools label. Under NCLB, Oregon had approximately 90 priority and focus schools. The ODE anticipates there will be approximately 900 schools in Oregon that will be labeled as CSI or TSI, these new labels. The U.S. Department of Education has suggested that comprehensive support schools should receive an additional subsidy of $500,000 a year for improvements, and that targeted support schools receive an additional subsidy of $50,000 a year for improvements. At this time, the ODE does not believe we will be able to provide even a tenth of that amount. The new ratings behind these labels will be based on achievement and progress in the following categories. One, growth and achievement in English language acquisition. Two, growth and achievement in math. Three, chronic absenteeism. Four, English learner proficiency. Five, freshmen on track to graduate as both a four-year and five-year cohort. And six, the four-year and five-year completion rates. ODE currently has a request for information out on a replacement test for S-BAC. This summer, they are designing and drafting a report on how to track and report test results and how to revise the regulations on educator evaluations. They did say specifically that state student assessments will not be required in professional evaluations. This fall, they'll be collecting input on a draft report on how to identify CSI and TSI schools and putting out an RFP for the replacement for the S-BAC test. This winter, they'll be preparing the district report card for 2018-19. In the spring of 2018, they will implement that report card and sign a contract for the new state tests. And in the summer of 2018, they'll be identifying the target schools. Finally, the ODE estimates actually implementing all these changes requires about a $70 million commitment. They currently have less than $10 million allocated to address the issues. On Measure 98, the presentation on the implementation talked about modifications to Measure 98 coming out of House Bill 2246. Measure 98 created a grant program to fund career and technical education programs, access to college-level and college prep courses, and dropout prevention strategies. Districts will be required to provide four-year plans each biennium, except for the first one, when we will have to submit a three-year plan. Due to its size and unlike many districts in Oregon, PPS will have to, will have to dedicate Measure 98 funds to all three areas specified. If the district dollar amount changes in the biennium, then the district can keep the designated amount. PPS can also spend Measure 98 funds biennium to be, to biennium. In other words, we don't have to spend on a year-to-year basis. We can do some sort of medium-range planning. Districts can spend up to 15% of their Measure 98 allocation on eighth-grade activities that align with the Measure 98 goals. And finally, this was a big clarification, PPS can spend Measure 98 funds on new programs or to expand existing programs. That was one of the big questions. The legislature allocated $170 million to implement Measure 98 for the biennium, which comes to approximately $400 per student. I'm trying to cut through.
Do we have to apply for those funds or?
Okay, for year one, I have the answer to that. For year one, districts submit a request for funds and sign a grant agreement. Initial requests for funds were due to ODE by June 30th. ODE is currently verifying data, and after verification, grant agreements will go out to the districts. The goal timeline is that they'll be out mid to late August. Once a grant agreement is signed, PPS can start spending the money. House Bill 2246 does mean that ODE will have to do some rules modifications, but there's no timeline for the changes. But OSBA doesn't expect any major programmatic changes to happen as a result. Okay. That's kind of detailed, but this was, I was at a meeting yesterday where people were kind of shrugging their shoulders about 98. Like, what are we doing? So, there's some, we got some good information from the conference.
Great, thank you. Do you have any --
Did we apply?
Oops. Do you have any information on, from OSBA, on the educator effectiveness bill and the implementation of that in the past?
I do not. Paul, do you?
I'm sorry, I can't, I couldn't hear the question. Do we have any information on what?
The educator effectiveness bill?
Uh, I'm sorry, the perception is terrible. Could you say that again, please?
The educator effectiveness bill? She wanted your opinion.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that very much, Jim. No, they did not mention that at all. I did not hear anything on it.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything either. So, natural question is, did we apply for the funds?
I believe we did meet the deadline, and I'll verify that just to make sure. My understanding, we did apply. I recall having the conversation about it.
Director Bailey?
So, a couple of things on Measure 98 monies. Is there an expectation that this is going to kind of go out prorated for districts? Or what if some districts apply and others don't? Will there be more available for the applicants? Will some districts maybe be turned down that their application wasn't good enough? And if we cut a program because of budget cuts, can we use 98 to restore that? Because it's, it seemed like in the actual bill, it said no, but we're, here we are.
So, Director Bailey, I think those are all great questions. And I'm looking at the hour and knowing that we have still a work session afterwards. But those are great questions, and I think, Superintendent Wad, if you could ask?
We can provide a report to answer these questions.
Thank you.
So, we're through our final agenda, and there's one other thing that I want to add in the future, or we could just have it be impromptu, but our student rep, what was it, so, do you want to be able to provide a report, or do you want the opportunity, depending on the board meeting, whether something's happened, to have an opportunity to share sort of what's happening in our schools, or do you want to wait till school starts or?
It can be like on a case-to-case basis. I can just request time to talk during the committee portion about what we're doing in Super SAC and the student union and things like that.
Great, okay. So, we'll count on you to let us know.
Sure.
We look forward to that, especially once school starts. Is there any other business for the board?
I just wanted to thank you for working through the process of the committee assignments. You know, I wanted to be chair and on all the committees. That didn't happen, and I appreciate the challenge it took to, you know, we've got seven people, eight people here who care deeply about all these issues, and trying to balance that out is a real challenge. And I appreciate, you know, flexibility going forward. After six months, we can kind of tweak it if we need to, but I just want to appreciate the work you put into that.
Thanks. And I think this goes for not just the committees, but everything we're doing, that we're going to have to see how things go. We'll want feedback from staff, like what's working and what's not, because we're going to try and do a lot of different things to make our meetings more accessible, informative, and really be able to work through a big agenda. But sometimes, we might do something that doesn't quite work, so people should speak up. And so, that goes for the committees as well. So, everybody's free to provide suggestions on how we can be even better as a governing board. Thank you.
Can I add one update?
If it's short.
So, at the, people may recall that at our last meeting, we had two representatives from the African-American community who wanted to, who wanted to talk to PPS and the board about the upcoming opening of Harriet Tubman Middle School, and in particular, talk about the possibility of having a right of return. So, access for students who may have been pushed out of the neighborhoods, their, the historical neighborhoods where they have, or the neighborhoods where they have historical ties because of gentrification. And also talk about the potential for facilities enhancements at Jefferson. And last Friday, Director Espaza Brown and I met with them, and we had a, I think, a really productive discussion. And these are complicated questions, so we're going to, we're going to continue to be talking, and we're going to be bringing in staff to, to talk about how we might be able to accommodate these concerns. And we'll be, we'll be continuing the discussions, and I think as time goes on, we'll be providing periodic updates as things happen.
Director Brown, do you want to add anything?
Thanks.
No, just that. I think that this will be ongoing work for a while, and so we've established some regular meetings. So, expect updates as we continue and partner with various staff in getting the information that we need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned, and the board will now convene into their work session.
The work session is here, in this room.